Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, May 3, 2023, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'd please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Susanna Ballard. David Diaz.
Here.
Joan De Zero.
Here.
Paul Air.
Here.
Gabrielle Medley.
Here.
Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
Dane Hatch. Matthew Mitchell. Lonnie Stevenson.
Here.
And Jim Harris.
Here.
Okay, correspondence and announcements, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. You may notice our online system is not working right now, so we're going to do this the old-fashioned way. We're going to have an old-school Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So when you get to the point where you're making motions, you want to look at your staff report and look at the motion request near the end if you're, when you want to make a motion. Other announcements are, planning, regular planning member Susanna Ballard and alternate member Dane Hatch's terms are expiring the end of June. If you'd like to reapply for that, please contact the city clerk's office. My understanding, they'll want you to have your application in near the end of this month. And that concludes staff's announcements. Thank you.
Minutes of the last meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections by Commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Diaz.
I motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Diaz, a second by Ms. Zero, to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, let's go ahead and call for the question.
Mr. Diaz? Ms. De Zero?
Yes.
Mr. Lair?
Yes.
Ms. Medley?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
And Chairman Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Let me first start by saying that this is a public hearing and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that anyone of the public that wishes to speak limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than three minutes, and to stay on point, and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Wilson?
I would like to go ahead and recuse myself from the first two items on the agenda today.
Not a problem. Thank you very much. We'll call you back after those two items. Mr. Wilson, or Mr. Stevenson, would you please come forward and fill Ms. Wilson's spot? The first item on today's agenda is item number ID 23-3739. This is a request for a minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for the south half of Assessor's Parcel Number 120-03-043 and 42, located at 6600 and 6700 Chenoweth Drive, to change the future land use designation from employment to high-density residential. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Here's the area map. The subject property's total five acres are located east of Highway 95 on the north side of Chenoweth Drive. They consist of the southern half of the parcel numbers 120-03-043 and 042, as shown here, and are currently vacant and undeveloped. They're located within the city sewer service area but are within Epcor's utility water service area, so the city does not provide water service to the properties. All the abutting properties are undeveloped. The properties are zoned agricultural preservation, AP, and industrial, I. Those are two and a half acres of each of those zonings. The abutting properties are zoned manufactured home and also AP and I industrial. The abutting properties to the north and west have a general plan designation of high-density residential. The property to the south, across Chenoweth Drive, is designated as commercial and low-density residential, and the property to the east is designated as employment. The growth projections and capacity section of the general plan suggest that changes may be made to the general plan if the proposals are consistent with the goals and policies of the plan. Within Lake Havasu City's incorporated area, there are about 2,500 acres currently designated for employment uses per the general plan. One could make a strong argument that a city of our size would not anticipate the need for more than 250, excuse me, 2,500 acres dedicated to industrial uses. The lack of land dedicated to workforce housing is a problem for many cities in Arizona, including Lake Havasu City. The proposal asks the city to consider altering our philosophy regarding housing in this specific area by changing the general plan designation to high-density residential, paving the way for a rezoning to begin to address the housing shortage. The requested high-density residential designation allows primary uses such as single-family residential, townhouses, apartments, and manufactured home parks. In December of 2021, the city council approved the general plan amendment for 39 acres of abutting property, here shown outlined in yellow, to change it from employment to high-density residential, the same as this request, to develop a manufactured home park. The applicant's letter of intent asked to amend the city's general plan to add these five acres of this request to the previous 39 acres to allow the manufactured home park. This general plan amendment is the first step in the process. The applicant has also submitted a request to rezone the property to an appropriate residential zoning district. At this point, the commission is asked to determine whether the requested general plan amendment is appropriate. That concludes staff's presentation. Open for any questions, and the applicant is also here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morris. Any questions of staff by Commissioners? Any at all? Okay, is the applicant present? Would you like to make a presentation? Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent in this request. Mr. Morris did an excellent job, thank you, and he's certainly been a pleasure to work with. This is a reasonable request. It adds on to an existing project which has been planned for some time. It makes a nice clean cut against a CMU and LDR to the south. If you noticed in the first picture, this used to be filled with over 150 junk cars, debris piles. Look, when I first saw the site, I was a little surprised, but it has all been completely cleaned up now, which is appropriate. The owners on this are tentatively moving forward. They've got a grading permit, I believe, and they're working with Epcor on the water issues. So the water issues are taking front and center on this project right now. But this is just an additional five acres of land from the original proposal. There's actually a few less lots actually going to be presented for the overall plan. So there are no increases in traffic, there are no increases in any other adverse ways as a result of this request. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think this absolutely complies with the general plan and the goals stated for housing and other things. We've cleaned up the site. I think it's a good deal. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions of the applicant by Commissioners? Ms. Zero?
You mentioned that there's going to be less than what you'd originally planned. What was the original plan for?
Yeah, I'll look for those numbers because as soon as I said it, I thought this is a zoning question, not general plan.
Yeah.
But I'll have that number. Yeah, the overall number of lots in this entire development actually decreased because we have extensive area for flood control. This particular annexation is required for the flood control drainage to take flood from the east and get it across the site. But I'll show it on the next one.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. All right, this is a public hearing, and this is the time for anyone to speak on this item. Anybody either pro or con, if there's anybody who'd like to come to the podium, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this item and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you much. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for land use action 23-3739, a minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for the south half of APNs 120-03-043 and 042, located at 6,600 and 6,700 Chenoweth Drive, to change the future land use designation from employment to high-density residential. And as a reminder, this item will go to the city council's June 13 meeting with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Commissioners?
Chair?
Mr. Diaz?
If there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 23-3739, as recommended by staff.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion by Mr. Diaz, a second by Ms. Medley, to approve land use action number 23-3739 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on this item by Commissioners? Hearing none, let's call for the question.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. De Zero?
Yes.
Mr. Lair?
Yes.
Ms. Medley?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
And Chairman Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Congratulations. The next item on today's agenda is ID 23-3740. This is a request for a planned development rezone for 6,590, 6,600, and 6,700 Chenoweth Drive and 1,800 and 2,000 Victoria Farms Road, from manufactured home, RMH Agriculture, to preservation, AP, and industrial, I, to public lands and facilities, P1, to accommodate a water well and storage and a manufactured home planned development, RMH/PD district to allow end-to-end parking spaces. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. This is, the subject property is shown here on the area map. It totals about 44 acres. The properties are located east of Highway 95 between Chenoweth Drive and Victoria Farms Road. It consists of five separate properties at this point that are currently vacant and undeveloped. The abutting properties to the northwest are home to storage units and the Havasu RV Resort. A small storage yard is developed to the northeast, and the balance of the abutting properties are undeveloped. The properties are currently zoned manufactured home, RMH, agricultural preservation, AP, and industrial, I. The abutting properties are zoned agricultural preservation, light industrial planned development, and I industrial. Here's the zoning plans proposed by the applicant, and the applicant's letter of intent proposes to add and rezone about two and a half acres each of agricultural preservation, shown in red here, and industrial, shown in I, zoning to the 39 acres previously zoned to RMH, which are shown in yellow, to allow a manufactured home park. And then they're also asking a water treatment and storage facility here, shown in green, the northwest corner of the property. That is within Epcor's water district, and so the rezone is to add this .38 acre portion of the development to P1 to facilitate Epcor's water infrastructure for the project. Utility facilities are allowed in the P1 zoning district. The applicant's site plan shows 294 manufactured home rental spaces for the development. The main gated entry is proposed from Victoria Farms Road near the northwest corner of the property, and a secondary gated entrance is shown near the northeast corner of the property of the project, and emergency access to the southern portion along Chenoweth Drive. The site plan also shows a clubhouse, swimming pool, dog park, and pickleball court. These residential and accessory uses are allowed in the manufactured home zoning district. The letter of intent also explains that the property owner's engineering team is working to complete a drainage analysis and preliminary design to accommodate and reduce the impact of the drainage wave flows. They have also submitted a traffic impact analysis to ADOT for review and approval, and are awaiting ADOT's comments. So an internal driveway and drainage channel, here shown in red, are proposed to encroach onto an abutting property near the southeast corner of the development. The property owner will enter into and record an access and drainage agreement with the abutting property owner to allow these encroachments. The proposed manufactured home development meets all the city's development code standards, except for one exception request. Manufactured home developments require two parking spaces per unit. The applicant proposes two parking spaces per unit, but is asking that the spaces be end-to-end spaces rather than side-by-side spaces. This style of parking is typical of many manufactured home developments, but is not specifically allowed in our development code. Therefore, they're asking for the exception through the PD process. Staff supports the requested exception. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have, and the applicant is also here. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions by Commissioners of staff? Anybody at all? Mr. Diaz?
So I just wanted to get on the record, so end-to-end parking is very, very common in these types of developments, I mean, all over the place, so I have no issue with that. But also, just to get on the record, can you explain for the public just the water such as Epcor versus city, so that's clear, because that's the question people are going to have?
Yes, the water is in Epcor's service area, so the city is not allowed to provide water here, so the developer and property owner have to go through Epcor to get their water.
So this property has no city water?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? All right. Is the applicant present? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning again. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent. Great job, Luke, all my notes. He covered most of them. I indicated before the developer was, in fact, working with Epcor and have been for a while. The plans right now are to go out and drill a well on that northern site up there where we've requested the rezone, and I think that's going to start in the next two weeks. That will be completed in the next four weeks, or that's certainly the plan right now, and see what type of water quality and quantity we can get out right at that site. It also proposes some storage tanks, so that's just a work in progress. Progress. Clearly, the development requires water, so that's just the long step in this project right now. In addition, we can talk more about the lots. I think the original application for this showed well over 300 spaces in this, and this layout right here, which I think is, the architect did a really nice job. There's 294 lots here. There are significant areas for the drainage structures, and all of you know that this area does have a, some sheet flow coming from the east that's got to cross, so we're good, we are going to encroach on that adjacent property, just like Mr. Morris said, and get some easements in order to do so, to provide for that drainage channel all the way around. It does work, and the project team engineers have been working on loas and other things that have to be processed through the floodplain department. I think there's just been a couple of other items in connection with this. I did hold a public participation meeting at the site. We had 29 people out there. I thought the discussion was good. They had some questions, and maybe I can kind of follow up. Some of those were access issues. We do have access at the northeast portion, right there, that will go down Victoria Farms. The questions were what types of improvements would we have to improve, and the bottom line is, whatever the city requires is what we're going to have to improve adjacent, directly adjacent to the city's right-of-way. In most cases, that would be like curb gutter, sawcut existing pavement, and then extend to that pavement edge, but I don't know the exact width of that. There will also be a landscape buffer along there, and the same will occur and be provided on the south with Chenoweth. That's an interesting road because it goes up and down. You have a lot of truck traffic going out to the dump site. The original plan did show an emergency access right there. We're kind of leaving that open now. Mr. Morris, it doesn't have an exit point, but it was always considered if it were required by the fire department or something, that is where it would be. The traffic study that we completed for this and was submitted, in fact, by Greenlight to ADOT does not show an access right there, so we're covered both ways, everything going through. And the last thing that there was concern from adjacent owners had to do with the entry and exit from Victoria Farm Roads at the southwest corner there. That exit, and we didn't play with it from the last approval. That exit was on the last entryway, was on the last approval for this project. We kept it there. We believe it's going to work. There are several utilities in Victoria Farms Roads, so that entryway is going to have to try to fit around it, hopefully not impact. There are manhole covers and other utilities out there, so that final location will be figured out by the engineers and the utility teams that are working out there. But that does look like where it will go. I'm just telling you, there might be a slight variation. And lastly, on Victoria Farms, the latest plans that I saw from the engineers showed if you were turning onto Chenoweth, north to Victoria, they were going to have a right-turn lane going into this project, which I think really alleviates a lot of any type of congestion that might be getting on that corner. I think I've covered most of the things. I do believe this is a good project. I absolutely believe you have a strong team working on it, and this is just my little piece. I won't be through the entire project, but I would ask that you approve the rezone request on the RMH/PD, the reason for that. So currently, everything except the bottom five acres already has RMH. I mean, the project is prepared to move ahead. The only thing that we discussed over the past six months had to do with this parking, on-lot parking, on-space parking, which doesn't affect anything, does not affect traffic counts, does not attract street whiffs, or it affects nothing, except how they're able to park on that site. With that in mind, I absolutely hope you will approve this without question. I appreciate Mr. Diaz's comments on that as well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant by Commissioners? Anybody? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, again, this is a public hearing, and I will open it up to the public. If there's anybody that wishes to speak on this item, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and, name for the record.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, thank you all very much. This looks like a great project. My name is Guy Reynolds. I'm a property owner in the Havasu RV Resort. I'm also the general manager, and the board couldn't be present today. Just asked me to convey some of our concerns. The concerns within the resort are the Chenoweth and Victoria Farms Road bottlenecking or excess traffic that may be created by this project. Through our resort, we have that issue as well right now, just as it is, because it is gated. We do get traffic stacked up. We're concerned turning right on the way out with these larger motor coaches and all of our traffic, and also turning left and coming in to access Victoria Farms Road, and hopefully, you know, this will be addressed with their TCS. And also, it's the speed. We have many, many near misses with the traffic coming down Chenoweth Drive and trying to turn right there, and as you've got people wanting to turn left, it gets quite evasive as far as the viewing and safety. So those are the concerns that the resort has, and we would just like for you all to take that into consideration, as well as with the developer.
All right, any questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. All right, if there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Steve Irwin, full-time resident of HRVR. My concern is also with the entrance. I actually call that the Chenoweth drag strip, because people go into the dump, to and from the dump are just flying. If you ever want to see a trash truck wheels come off the front, you know, as they go through the dip over there, come on out and watch that. It's pretty amazing, but they are, people are flying through there. And the left turn into Victoria Farms Road, it's a single left turn, and if you were in that left-turn lane, there's actually four lanes that come up the street, but they end at the end of Lowe's property. So if you're in that left-turn lane, people are actually passing you in the dirt to go by you at a high rate of speed. So where that exit is, or entrance is, concerns all of us at the park. It is a busy street, not only our traffic, but you have a propane company up the street that is bringing tanker trucks, you know, the large over-the-road tanker trucks up there to fill their systems, plus all their traffic. And you have gravel trucks that go up and down Victoria Farms Road. So that intersection will be, in my opinion, quite dangerous and really needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Any questions of the speaker? Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hey, good morning. Greg Seeds. I live at the Havasu RV Resort.
What was your name again, please?
Greg Seeds.
Thank you.
And my only objection is the insurance onto Victoria Farms Road. During peak season, our resort has over 400 vehicles that are going in and out all the time, along with the rock trucks, the propane trucks. It seems like it would be a much better location to exit and enter onto Chenoweth Drive. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all?
Mr. Chairman, I may direct you to, staff did receive an email with a letter they wanted to make sure the Planning Commission got. It's another letter from the Havasu RV Resort with the same concern. So just to bring that to your attention, you do have that in front of you. Thank you.
For the record, we do have a letter here about the same concerns. Seeing nobody else that wants to speak, I'll bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations, unless you have, the applicant has a rebuttal. Come to the microphone, state your name again.
Kathy Tackett Hicks, owner's agent. I just wanted to indicate, I mean, we don't want any safety issues either, and that is why we had a professional traffic engineer. They've already issued a report, and that is still has, that is still being reviewed. I don't think that there were going to be any major changes to the roadway as a result of that, but they do follow ASHTO requirements, and I just want you to know that there are professionals on it. The city will also review that, and whatever, whatever comes out of that is what is going to have to be completed. So I do believe it's being taken care of, and we want to make sure that, I mean, we're on the record, no one wants it to be a serious or, you know, a safety issue at all. Chenoweth is a crazy road. I've looked at it. It's up and down. They did talk about getting on and off of Chenoweth. That's almost more scary with those big trucks and then having the project come on and off there. There was a lot of discussion about that. We do think that the locations here are going to be the best, but it is going to be reviewed by a traffic engineer, and so we don't have to get too much brain damage over it, because someone who really knows what they're talking about will be guiding this. So I just wanted to relay that. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Diaz?
So where are we at on that timeline, on that, getting that, you know, Ts crossed and Is dotted on that study?
The traffic study was issued to ADOT, I think, in October, in October. So they're way ahead, and the first set of comments came back, and there was nothing. Yeah, it looked like the road whiffs and everything were appropriate. They took the traffic counts on there, and there was some discussion on seasonal and low traffic counts. Again, ASHTO, ASHTO, the highway safety, traffic, whatever. They send when those traffic counts are taken, and that engineering has been completed. They did not have any major modifications. I don't know if the right-turn lane from Chenoweth onto Victoria was a part of that? It was. Okay, so they did recommend the right-turn lane into this project, but whatever that is, has to be done.
And that will be submitted to the city, and the city will review that, that traffic study?
Of course, just like every other project. Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we are at the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation- forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for Land Use Action 23-3740, a planned development rezoned for 6590, 6600, and 6700, Chenoweth Drive, and 1800 and 2000, Victoria Farms Road, from manufactured home, RMH, agricultural preservation, AP, and industrial, I, to public lands and facilities, P1, to accommodate a water well and storage, and to manufactured home planning development, RMPD District, to allow end-to-end parking spaces with the following conditions. One, the developer shall abide by the requirements received from ADOT's review of the traffic analysis. And, two, the developer shall enter into and record an access and drainage agreement, easement agreement with the property owner of abutting APN 120-03-064, to allow the access and drainage encroachments onto that property. This item will go to the City Council's June 13 meeting with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion by commissioners. Anybody?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lair.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend that the City Council approve Land Use Action Number 233740, a planned development rezoned for 6590, 6600, and 6700, Chenoweth Drive, and 1800 and 2000, Victoria Farms Road, from manufactured home, RMH, agriculture preservation and industrial to public lands and facilities to accommodate a water well and storage, and to manufactured home, planned development district, to allow end-to-end parking spaces with the following conditions. One, the developer shall abide by the requirements received from ADOT's review of the traffic analysis. And, two, the developer shall enter into and record an access and drainage easement agreement with the property owner of abutting APN 120-03-064, to allow the access and drainage encroachments on that property.
Ms. Zero.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Lair, a second by Ms. Zero, to approve Land Use Action Number 23-3740 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Diaz.
Just one quick question, and maybe for Luke. Is there a way to get some daylight on the traffic study if some of the owners of the current residents out there wanted to take a look at the study and see what their recommendations by ADOT are? They could, they could review it.
Once we receive the traffic study, that's certainly public information. They could request, do a request for public information for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's call for the question.
Mr. Diaz.
Yes.
Ms. Zero.
Yes.
Mr. Lair.
Yes.
Ms. Medley.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
And Chairman Harris.
Yes.
Motion passed 4 to 0.
Congratulations and good luck. At this time, if Mr. Stevenson would step down, please. Thank you for your service, and Ms. Wilson, rejoin us. The next item on today's agenda is ID 23-3746. This is a request to rezon 2205 Victoria Farms Road, Assessor's Parcel Number 120-03-045, a 30-acre portion of Planned Development Number 07-00200005, from Light Industrial Plan Development District, LIPD, to Industrial District, I. Mr. Kearns, your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located on Victoria Farms Road in the north part of the city. The surrounding properties are largely undeveloped, except for outdoor storage and a storage unit complex currently under construction. The property is 30 acres and is currently vacant. There is a 60-foot-wide private ingress/egress easement that services the 10-acre property at the northeast corner. The rezon will not affect the private easement. The property is currently, the currently, or the property currently has a stop-work order for grading and the installation of storage containers without the proper permits. The properties to the west, north, and south are zoned light industrial. The properties to the east are zoned light industrial, planned development, and industrial. In 2007, the City Council approved a planned development, which included 160 acres along Victoria Farms Road for the Pinnacle RV Resort, now known as Havasu RV Resort. The subject property is located within the originally approved Havasu RV Resort. The westernmost 40 acres is fully developed as Phase 1. The adjacent 120 acres to the east was proposed for Phase 2. The subject property was to be part of Phase 2 of the proposed RV Resort. The new owners of the subject property request to remove the parcel from the planned development and rezon the property to an industrial designation. To date, 59 acres of the originally approved 120-acre RV Resort planned development have been removed from the planned development and rezoned to light industrial or industrial. The potential allowed uses for the industrial district are shown in the permitted uses table. The applicant has stated in their letter of intent that there is no development or building anticipated at this time. The property is currently zoned light industrial planned development, which does not allow development outside of the approved planned development. Therefore, the applicant is asking to rezon the property as industrial for future development. Future development for the property will require the appropriate design review and building permits. Any lot alterations or splits will require review and approval by city staff. No objections to the requests were received from any other reviewing agencies or departments. This concludes staff's presentation. We're open to any questions. And the applicant is also available.
All right. Are there any questions of staff on this item? Okay. Hearing none, is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Hugo Acun. I am representative of the owner for this rezoning. So at this time, they're not planning to build anything. It's just remain as vacant land.
Strictly a rezon request.
Yep, just strictly a rezon request.
Any questions of the speaker? The applicant. Ms. Wilson.
If there's no plans, why is there grading going on?
Obviously, what we're thinking is to place some storages units on the site. But again, I heard that they're probably going to have to actually go in there and put a permit for whatever they want to do there. If they want to create paths, they're obviously going to have to show some sort of a site plan and present that over to the city to review for approval and for any permits that are required for that site.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Troy Wild.
Say again, please.
Troy Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Wild.
I'm the adjacent owner right behind this, what they're trying to get rezoned. And my concerns are, and it has been for quite some time, the regress and egress, which Trevor said that that wouldn't be impacted to my access, to my property. And I don't know how to word this, because he already is in violation of putting storage containers in the egress and regress of the property.
Let me interrupt you there for a moment.
Okay.
And maybe Mr. Morris could help us on, or Mr. Kearns can help us on this. Looking at this map, the ingress/egress would be that, this easement right there, that this 60-foot private ingress/egress.
Correct.
And that is a recorded, dedicated easement.
Okay.
To access your property.
Correct.
Okay. So this is what we're talking about.
Okay.
All right. Please continue.
Then that's all I have.
Okay. So what you're saying is?
What my concern is, that by rezoning this, that that will not change, because.
No, that, as I understand it.
I'm in the process of trying to sell the property, but all the, and I went through the proper channels to do everything on mine to rezoning it. This has impacted me. I can't even run business out of mine because of what he's done with his gating and, and stuff.
Are you saying, and this may not be pertinent, but are you saying that he's blocked off access to this ingress and egress?
Yes, he has.
Well, that's, as I understand it, that's not allowed. And we can, we can ask the city attorney, that ingress and egress easement, that runs with the land, correct? This zoning does not change the ingress or egress easement?
No, zoning would not change an easement, but I don't have any of that in front of me, and I'm not making any.
I understand.
Anyon the legality of it, whether it is in existence currently, but typically just a rezon or zoning of the property does not change any other legal entitlements to the property.
Yeah. The map here shows that there's an easement there, and the zoning will not change that easement. So that easement will remain in effect, is the answer to your question, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt.
Mr. Morris.
I believe the speaker is in touch with some legal issues with, maybe dealing with an attorney. Maybe you can elaborate a little bit on that.
So our whole problem is, it's impacted us to run our business by him putting gates up. I've talked with the city, I've talked to Unisource, I've talked to every agent that has their stuff in there, and now I've had to take it legal. This is my second time of having to hire an attorney. I hired an attorney, there was supposed to be no blockage of my access. I can't get a definite answer of what my rights are, but to take it further to a judge. Now I'm told that this is recognized, that this is an egress and a regress to access my property. It shouldn't be blocked by a gate and no trespassing signs. I can't even get trucks in there to dump into my property. So I guess what my, my concern is, is that all the guidelines have to be done, and this needs to go away so that I can use my property for what I rezoned for.
So I think that he's in a way saying this is a private property matter. He's dealing with an attorney to deal with it, with the access. Am I, am I okay saying that for you?
Yes, but now that you guys are recognizing that there is egress and regress.
Shows right here on the map that there's a dedicated easement right there.
There you go.
And that easement is for access to that property. You can't landlock a property knowingly.
But I would want to, just, just a note, I would want to see the actual easement and the language contained in that easement. I understand what's shown up there, but obviously there's something else further going on if it needs to be adjudicated by a judge to determine what the legalities of it are.
Correct.
So I'm just going to caution, be very careful in any comments that you make. We're looking at one piece of a very large puzzle. We don't know what the language is. We don't know what's happened since or before or after, if this is correct, if something has happened that has changed that in any way, shape, or form. So I really, we can't, I'm sorry, we can't answer those questions. I mean, obviously you have an attorney and you're working with them, and that's great, but we're only looking at the zoning and what the city can control. That's not a city easement.
And I understand, and I.
The basic question that he's asking is, does that, does the zoning change that easement if there's an easement there?
We've answered that.
Pardon me?
We've answered that.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's the best we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Anybody in the audience who wishes to speak? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Steve Irwin, full-time resident of HRVR. There is grading going on in that property and wondering what it's doing to the floodplain. Our park is seeing more water runoff through a creek that we have run through our place. And I have called the city a couple of times, saying we're actually seeing more water and what's happening above that's causing that water to divert into the park. So whatever grading's going on, floodplain needs to be taken into, you know, what the natural flow of the water is, needs to be taken into consideration.
And I believe Mr. Morris has indicated, or Mr. Kearns has indicated, that there is a stop-work order on that, on that grading.
And the concern is, what have they done already that caused this additional water? Needs, I think, needs to be looked at by the city.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this meeting, bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for Land Use Action Number 23-3746 for 2205 Victoria Farms Road, parcel number 120-03-045, from Light Industrial Plan Development District to Industrial District. This item will go to the City Council's June 13, 2023, meeting with the Commission's recommendation.
Okay. We are at the table for questions or discussion by commissioners and/or a motion. Anybody? Ms. Zero?
I'll make a motion to, I move to recommend approval to the City Council of Land Use Action Number 23-3746, rezoning 2205 Victoria Farms Road, APN 120-03-045, a 30-acre portion of Planned Development Number 07-00200005, from Light Industrial Plan Development to Industrial.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Zero. Do we have a second? Anybody?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lair.
I'll have a second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Zero and a second by Mr. Lair to approve Item Number 23-3746 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's call for the question.
Mr. Diaz.
No.
Ms. Zero.
Yes.
Mr. Lair.
Yes.
Ms. Medley.
No.
Ms. Wilson.
No.
Ms. Ballard.
No.
Chairman Harris.
I'm going to say yes, because this is a zoning issue only. Yes.
Motion fails, 4 to 0.
So what that means, it'll go to the planning and zoning, I mean, go to the City Council with a recommendation of a denial.
Thank you.
Apologize, I said 4 to 0, I meant 4 to 3.
Yes. And with that, that brings us to the call to the public. This is where the, anybody in the audience can speak to the commission on any item whatsoever. We may not address you or respond, but this is the call to the public. Anybody who wishes to speak to the commission? Hearing none, we'll close the call to the public and future meetings, Mr. Morris.
Yes, the next meeting will be May 17 in two weeks. Thank you.
All right. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.